Mayor Dexter?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Carr? Councilmember Meyer? Councilmember Miller?
Here.
Councilmember Shorman Warren?
I'm here, and I think there's a little delay on the line on my end, so if I interrupt anyone, my apologies.
Councilmember Schwab?
Here.
Councilmember Suggs?
Here.
Here.
Senator West?
Present.
Attorney Blart?
I'm here, I'm here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I did forget to ask for a motion to excuse Councilmember Carr or Deputy Mayor Carr, if anyone would be interested in making that now.
So moved.
Second. Okay, anyone opposed to excusing Deputy Mayor Carr? Please state your opposition. All right, hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you, and now if you can please stand as you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. That brings us to our first public comment period. We do have a public hearing tonight that is on the municipal code updates relating to requirements for project permit procedures, so if you're here to speak to that item, please wait for the public hearing. Otherwise, the first public comment period is open for topics on tonight's agenda, and I don't know if we have anyone signed up, but we'll give Carrie just a second to check. If you are joining us virtually in the WebEx, now is the time to raise your virtual hand, so I know that you wish to speak. If you're here for other items, we have a second public comment period at the end. And I'll pause just a minute to get a list. All right, I don't see any hands online, so I will go ahead and call on the first person on the list who is here for public comment, and that is Cliff Force. And as a reminder, if you're speaking, please state your name and whether or not you're a resident, and if since you're in council chambers, the lights will keep track of your three minutes for you.
I'm Cliff Force, resident of Calum County, not of Port Angeles, but Port Angeles resident all my life, Port Angeles address. Does that fill the quota? Okay, I, I'm a little late, probably a public comment on, on the upcoming city licensing for, well, for businesses. And I, and after reading the article over and over in Port Angeles paper, I just got, I had to come down and say something. I got the overall feeling, what was written in the paper, what was said on the radio was like, for some reason, the city council seems to think that businesses owe the city, okay? I would like to point out, without, without businesses being here, you would not be getting any of your sales tax revenue, okay? They, a, a small businesses are the backbone of this county and every county and every state. We employ so many people, put us all together, okay? And we take all the risks, and we do all the bookwork to reporting, just, just to make sure you get your sales tax, okay? Now hotels, motels do the same thing with their taxes, okay? I, I just had to point this out to you, you know, this, it just reminds me, I, I, I just hate this, when they said, well, City of Squim has it, the City of Port Townsend has it. And I hate that, to me, it's just monkey see, monkey do legislating, okay? And I talked to three different business owners downtown who family owned, been here for generations, okay? No one approached them and asked them, what do you think about this? They read it in the paper, so this widespread supposedly got out to the business community, did not happen, okay? All right, and I, 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 I can't emphasize enough that, you know, all the work that goes in to small businesses, and I, I'll put it on a perspective for the city council. I know that all you ran on, you know, you've done a public duty, you know, a sense of doing something for the city, for the public, okay? You put in so much time up here, I really appreciate that. I really appreciate so much time, and you get a pittance in renumeration and benefit, okay? Sounds a lot like a small business, okay? And it'd be just like turning to you and saying, if you're on the city council, you have to pay a hundred and ninety bucks a year. It's just basically a slap in the face. And then you mentioned Port Townsend and Squim, well, you come up with a figure triple of, of what Squim has, double, more than double of what Port Townsend has, I don't know how you come up with that fee, you know, figure, but it's a slap in the face. And that's, that's the basic line right there, short and, and, and to the point. It's just like right out of the Barney Pike handbook. You know, the, the bumbling, well-intentioned person on, on Andy of Mayberry, you know, police officer, so that's it, folks. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And for anyone who knows, I usually follow the rules, my apologies, because I didn't realize that wasn't on the, I didn't notice the topic, and so. It looks like everything else is public hearing or otherwise, so are you for the public, I have you down for the public hearing? You don't, but you can come down and speak, oh, yes, you do, never mind. Apparently, I'm having trouble reading this evening. Go ahead, Steve.
Stephen Luxton, I live in the city of Port Angeles, and just on the tax thing real quick, it does feel like it's, for the, the business licensing, it feels like it's just a tax. And the other thing that, with these business licensing deals is that only businesses that have a physical address will end up really paying them. Contractors, people that come in and do work, they're basically, it's not that they're exempt from it, but there's no way to really enforce whether they're actually paying it or not. So it falls upon the brick and mortar businesses that are downtown. So I'm, what I'd like to address really quickly is the, um, the city's acquisition of the property on C and Ninth for building an apartment complex. And the city, if you go back seven or eight years in this town, there hadn't been an apartment complex built since, back in 2018 would have been a perfect time for this, because no one had built an apartment complex here since 2005. Now we have four or five complexes that are complete or near completion, that essentially showed, they proved that it is possible. So it seems, it seems funny at this kind of late hour for the city to come in. But one of the things about the way that this is, this paving, I'll use the analogy of building a bridge to more housing. The city has done an exceptional job at building a really wide bridge. For instance, the multifamily tax exemption, it applies everywhere in town. Almost every homeowner would utilize it if they wanted to. ADUs everywhere in town. So we built this system that really offers very wide opportunity to everybody in town. And I think there's a concern about this proposal specifically, that if the city has a specific anointed developer, or the city is, that that won't be a level playing field for those people that are already, you know, invested in building more housing. So it's, it may not be one of these things that, it doesn't, it's not building the bridge anymore. Now it's giving people, you know, nobody wants to build something thinking that the city is their main competition in, in construction or in attracting subcontractors. No city inspector is going to go out to a job and inspect the city's job, or their preferred contractor in the way that they inspect the rest of us. And so I kind of wanted to bring up the site up on Fairmount Avenue, because that's been a really great example of using the city's capability to take it, something that was really a blighted property and turn it into housing. And so I just want to say, going forward on this proposal, I think it's just really important to make sure that this doesn't, this continues to leave a really wide opportunity for everybody in town, and has the appearance, or more than the appearance, hopefully, of a fair playing field for everybody, all the builders, all the developers that are currently working on, on the problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Anyone else wish to speak to something on tonight's agenda?
Hello, James Taylor, City of Port Angeles. I was reading through the agenda items today, and, you know, I was listening to City Councilman Lindsay, sorry Lindsay, I blew your last name before I could even get out. He says the city's broke. He's there at, at the Drake meeting with plenty of utilities, he comes and tells us the city's broke. I read, I read that we're buying new police cars, and one of them, they have sixty-nine thousand on it, and it says it's obsolete, or it's beyond serviceable use. Can we please just be honest and say we want new shiny stuff, and we want the citizens to pay for it, and not call it obsolete? Because that's truly what this is. We're just, we're just spending more money because we want to. And, you know, at my house, when the door gets left open, because I'm the pillar of the utility bill, I go close it. When, you know, somebody wants a new Xbox, I have to say no. And it really seems that, you know, as the managers of our money, and the, the folks that look out for our needs because we're elected to do, I have never heard this body say no to anything. And I'm wondering if, if just once, it doesn't have to be these police cars, it could be the, the pickup trucks that the utility, you know, has to have these, you know, sixty-five thousand dollar pickups. You could have said no then, you could have said, a fifty-five thousand, a fifty thousand dollar truck does exactly what you need. But you've never said no to anything. And, you know, as, as the person whose money you're using to buy these, I'd really like to hear just one of you say no to something. We spend money, we spend money, we spend money, and we don't say no to anything the city puts forth. And it's, it's frustrating to know that you really don't care about the citizens of the community. You care about the city spending all the money they want to. And it's, it's, you know, and I'll, I'll come back up here the next time we buy vehicles, and I'll say the same speech, I'll reword it, so, you know. Are you going to say no to anything the city asks, wants to spend money on? Have you ever said no to anything the city wants to spend money on? Are, are you actually running the show, or is the city just do whatever they want? Anyway, thanks.
All right. Anyone else wish to speak at this first public comment period? Okay, then we will move on. And we have the public hearing at six thirty, so let's see if we can get through the consent agenda as a starting point. Oh, actually, let's do late items really quickly. Any late items from staff?
Mayor and Council, no late items from staff this evening.
Any late items from council? Okay, no late items. All right, anything anyone would like to add to the consent agenda? Drew?
Would you like me to go in order, or just?
Sure, in order.
G one, code re-envisioning?
Okay.
G two, utility base rate?
Let's, actually, let's go one by one. Is there opposition to code, the code re-envisioning?
I'd like to.
Yes, please.
G two?
G two is the utility base rate, any opposition to adding that to consent? I don't see any. Okay, go ahead.
H one, final allocation of American Rescue Plan Act funding?
Any opposition to the adding the ARPA item? Okay, go ahead.
H two, resolution authorizing the redemption of the 2015 electric revenue refunding bonds prior to maturity?
Any opposition to that? Okay, go ahead.
H three, resolution amending the city's master fee schedule?
Any opposition? Okay.
J one, nine thirty-five West Tenth Street real property purchase?
Okay. Any opposition? Okay.
J two, Eighth Street paving construction contract?
I'm just going to assume there's, if, if you have opposition, raise your hand if you're online and otherwise in council chambers to say something. Go ahead.
And I do recognize that Lindsay's running on a delay.
Yep.
J three, Motivations Inc. Dispatch On-Demand Service Agreement? J four, Washington State Transportation Improvement Board Grant Acceptance? J five, Washington State Transportation Improvement Board Grant Acceptance ADA Peabody Street? And my apologies, J four was same thing, but Marine Drive paving? J six, Contract Award Transmission Main Replacement and Directional Boring Design Services?
All right, any opposition to anything other than the code re-envisioning? Latricia, did you want to say something, or are you just looking? I just want to make sure I don't move ahead.
No, I'm getting a, a notice that my computer might shut down, not because I'm out of power, but because update. So if I disappear, I'll be back on.
Tell it to, you want to schedule it.
Well, I, it went away.
Okay. We'll know why, and then you can find us on your phone. Okay, I will go ahead and read the consent, oh, is there anything I would like to pull from Consent Agenda? Oh, Lindsay, go ahead.
Sorry, it wasn't a pool, but I would like to hear our staff's responses to the public comments related to the consent agenda items.
Okay. The equipment purchase, is that what you mean? Or just all of them?
There was, well, there were at least the equipment purchase and also the property acquisition. I, I might have missed one.
Okay, I will read the consent agenda, and then we can go to staff for comments or council questions, of course. Okay, the consent agenda, the city council minutes of December third, twenty twenty-four. Expenditure report from November twenty-three, twenty twenty-four to December sixth, twenty twenty-four, in the amount of two million, seven hundred seventeen thousand, five hundred four dollars and thirty-six cents. Tree trimming contract twenty twenty-four dash fourteen, final acceptance. Decamp facility design amendment five, PSA twenty twenty dash thirteen. Water system modeling support contract amendment number five, PSA twenty nineteen eleven. Waste water treatment plant, Encall Boiler and HVAC Services, contract twenty twenty-four dash thirty-nine. Department of Energy Bonneville Power Administration Grant Award. Equipment purchase, replacement of police patrol vehicles. Aurelian AI non-emergency call stacking. Utility base rate volunteer shut off of service. Final allocation of American Rescue Plan Act funding. Resolution authorizing the redemption of the 2015 electric revenue refund bonds to, prior to maturity. Resolution amending the city's master fee schedule. Two thirty-five West Tenth Street real property purchase for affordable housing. Eighth Street paving construction contract CON dash twenty twenty-four dash zero five. Motivations Inc. Dispatch On-Demand Service Agreement. Washington State Department of, uh, Washington State Transportation Improvement Board Grant Acceptance Marine Drive Paving Hill Street to Mill Bridge, Project TR zero three two four. Washington State Transportation Improvement Board Grant Acceptance ADA Peabody Street to Laridson Boulevard, uh, Peabody Street, Laridson Boulevard to First Street, Project TR zero seven one six. Contract Award Transmission Main Replacement and Directional Boring Design Services, PSA dash twenty twenty-four dash thirteen. Do you have a motion to approve or questions?
Motion to approve?
Second. All right, so there was question on the Eighth Street property, I mean, the, not Eighth Street property, the Tenth Street property. Calvin, do you want to, or Nathan?
So Mayor and Council, I'm happy to, to talk about that one. So nine, nine thirty-five West Tenth Street, which is located at the corner of C Street and Tenth Street, is a property opportunity where the city will be purchasing the property to fulfill an item that has been incorporated into our latest strategic plan, which is the Housing Pilot Project. This doc, this item was also incorporated in the Capital Facilities Plan approximately two years ago. And this very much is an opportunity where the city will have an opportunity to work with private developers, as well as potential for private nonprofits to ensure we see multifamily housing implementation. And in fact, is not dissimilar to what we saw the city initiate relative to the Fairmont property, relative to seeing Habitat for Humanity move forward with that. I think a major difference is the intensity, and that our goal here is to see successful multifamily development spurred by the many incentives and packages that the city of Port Angeles have put forward in the effort to ensure housing is successful. And we hope that it further demonstrates successful market for multifamily housing in the community. So there's a number of things that we'll be working on with that, but as you see in your packet, it does incorporate a request for proposals and authorization to move forward with that, and we certainly invite our private development community, as well as local nonprofits, to submit relative to that RFP.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council on that? Okay. Lindsay, what was the other one? Other vehicles?
The other one was James Taylor's comment regarding police vehicles.
Right. Is that, so, is that a Public Works question, because the fleet maintenance? All right. Scott, would you mind taking that?
Yes, absolutely. So council, good evening. Before you tonight, we have a memo. Summary is follows, the two thousand and twenty-five budget includes funds to procure three marked patrol vehicles for the police department as identified in the approved twenty twenty-five to twenty thirty Capital's Facilities Plan. The police department, in coordination with purchasing, will be utilizing an Arizona State contract, CTR zero five nine three two two dash AZ through Peoria Ford in Peoria, Arizona, who is a well-known public safety vehicle supplier who stocks these types of vehicles. Upfitting will be done by Systems for Public Safety, Inc. in Lakewood, Washington, who will also be receiving the vehicles directly from the manufacturer. This is a, consistent with the process, we have purchased these vehicles in the past in this same way, this is not new. Funding for the vehicle replacements are identified in the two thousand and twenty-five budget under account five zero one seven six three zero five nine four six four one zero through the approved twenty twenty-five, twenty thirty Equipment Services Capital Facilities Plan, in the amount of eighty-seven thousand, three hundred dollars for each of the three vehicles. A budget amendment in the amount of fourteen thousand, two hundred ninety-five dollars will be required to complete the purchase. Recommendation is, one, approve the purchase of three police department twenty twenty-five Ford Interceptor SUVs that are a functional equivalent of existing vehicles, number zero nine one three, number one three one four, and number six one zero one, for an amount not to exceed two hundred and seventy-six thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars, including taxes and accessories. Two, authorize the city manager to approve and execute the final purchase documents to complete the purchase, and to make minor modifications as necessary. Three, authorize the city manager to surplus vehicles, number zero nine one three, number one three one four, and number six one zero one, and to dispose of those vehicles in a commercially reasonable manner upon addition of the new vehicles to the city fleet. Happy to answer any questions.
And Mayor and Council, if I can add to that, I know that Chief Smith would very much like to add to that if, if he were here. And I think it's important to remember with police vehicles, mileage isn't necessarily the factor at play. Effectively, our officers oftentimes live in these vehicles for at least ten hours a day, and oftentimes those vehicles are shared. So the wear and tear that goes into a normal police vehicle is very different than what you see in a daily driving car. I think it's important to share as well that no, we're not looking for new shiny vehicles, but instead, we actually plan ahead relative to all of our capital purchases, including vehicles. So six years in advance, we have budgeted for each of these vehicles, and we save up along the way from the capital funds and set those aside for each vehicle, saving up so that at the end of the day, when a vehicle is ready to be replaced, the funding is there and available for it to be replaced.
Thank you. Lindsay, go ahead, and then Amy.
Yeah, I, I, I can't wait till we do that same level of asset management with each of our streets on each city block. That'll be the day. We do it with the fleet because it's easier. But we are still asking for a fourteen thousand dollar budget amendment, so I think the public comment would have been, why aren't you not buying within the budgeted amount? Why are you buying stuff that's more than what you budgeted for?
Amy?
Thank you, and I.
Oh, I'm sorry, that, that was a question.
Oh, sorry, okay, go ahead.
Thank you for the question. So one of the things that I've been working on is, is trying to get all of the costs associated with these purchases in, included upfront. In my brief time here and doing some research, there was some, some items from my department, for example, that were being paid for after the fact that weren't always captured upfront. So part of this additional cost is me capturing those fees upfront that our fleet department does in support of these vehicles. Things like, things that our outfitter is not doing, but we're doing in-house, so some of those costs are related to that. And the others are just the timing of, of the purchase, you know, we start researching these purchases month, months ago, and as we move forward, some of those costs adjust, so there's, there's some inflationary factors in there that we're capturing with that additional money. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy, go ahead.
Thank you. Just very quickly, mostly because Chief Smith is not here, and I've had some experience. I have had these conversations with Chief Smith several times when this comes up for new police vehicles, and how often it appears they are needed. And I think wear and tear is a, like a, an easy way of explaining that, but these cars are running twenty, on, running twenty-four hours a day, stop and go, and, you know, going very fast when they need to, and so the need is, is definitely there. And my point was that we have had these conversations while you may not hear all of that, or anyone saying no up here, it's not because some of those costs are not being questioned. They are just having those conversations with the director and getting those answers in that way. So I think the public is also welcome to submit some of those questions to get those same answers.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as read. Anyone opposed to the motion, please state your opposition? All right, hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And Lindsay, I'm going to, if I use unanimous consent again tonight, I will be sure to pause to make sure that you are caught up on the delay. Okay, so it's six thirty-four. We'll go to the next item on the agenda, which is item F one. That is the continuation of the public hearing on the municipal code update, and I'm going to go to Calvin for that.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, you'll find this information starting on page F one of your packet. Municipal Code Update twenty-four dash one twenty-five addresses the required amendments to the Port Angeles Municipal Code necessary to implement Senate Bill five two nine zero and Chapter thirty-six seventy B of the RCW. City staff have utilized the SB fifty-two ninety code update process to create a clearer procedural process for all project permits the city reviews. The updates are procedural in nature, focusing solely on review criteria and do not alter existing zoning regulations or permitted uses within the city. This proposal includes removing many procedures now scattered throughout the PAMC and updating them to a clear, consistent, centralized, and user-friendly procedural chapter. Additionally, Madrona Law assisted in the drafting process as part of the city's code re-envisioning code, code audit process, and approximately one hundred pages of current code are being consolidated down to roughly seventy pages as part of this proposal. At your December third council meeting, it was requested that city staff provide information on this proposal to members of the Planning Commission. To that end, on December sixth, three days later, CED staff provided notice of tonight's public hearing and a link to the entire proposal, the council memo, ordinance, and code to members of the Planning Commission. Additionally, during the December eleventh meeting of the Planning Commission, CED staff provided an overview of the proposal. Based on council feedback, comments received during the December third public hearing, and input received during the December eleven Planning Commission meeting, staff are recommending a few revisions to the original proposal. First, a new type zero permit or over-the-counter permit category has been added. Additionally, revisions for the upcoming mobile and itinerary vendor permits have also been included. Additionally, a clarification has been made to the type four permit timelines. And finally, we have two staff amendments this evening that we are recommending based on recent feedback from members of the development community, which were emailed to you earlier today and have been available and are available at the council dais and for the public. The remaining portions of the original proposal are unchanged from the version reviewed during your December third public hearing. So tonight's recommendation is, one, to open the continued public hearing, two, close the public hearing, three, conduct the second reading of the ordinance, consider the staff amendments, and then four, adopt the ordinance. And with that, happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, I will go ahead and continue the public hearing. So if you are joining us virtually to speak to this item, and this is the public hearing, I'm not going to use my gavel. So please raise your virtual hand. So please raise your virtual hand, and I have two people signed up for public hearing. So we'll start with Steve. And same rules apply, name whether or not you're resident, and you'll have three minutes.
Hello, Stephen Luxon. I live in the city of Port Angeles. So this proposal is a really big, wide pavestone on that bridge to getting more housing. These are things that on just my projects, I would have saved thousands of dollars had these timelines been in place, and I would have been able to get things accomplished, you know, more quickly, which is, it's a double bonus. The housing is out faster and you save money. So I mean, looking back at this, there's been so many incremental improvements over time to now, you know, back in 2018, you really couldn't have built anything anywhere. There was no way to build anything in this town. There was only a handful of apartment sites, and the people who owned them were basically speculating, and they weren't going to build anything there anyway. So now we've, we've slowly got this, we've slowly built up confidence with allowing, first opening the door to allowing the stuff, and then adding the grants and adding the tax exemptions. And, and now these timelines, I think, would be another thing to really just help build confidence in the market. And a lot of these things are, you know, a lot of these things are this type, you know, zero, one, and two permit. It's actually going to speed things up for the city too, because a lot of these things have been going through a full process, and they don't need to go through a full process. There are things that can be issued pretty, pretty rapidly. So I'm, I'm very optimistic with, you know, seeing this as part of the city code. And I hope you'll pass it this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Mary Lee?
Nice computer. I gotta take off my glasses or I can't read. I'm Mary Lee Smith, City of Port Angeles. I'm also, at least till the end of this year, on the planning commission. And I have been for six years. So we're robsters in the pot on the stove when the water's getting warmer. Our local government is betraying us. Continue, they, you guys are continuing to erode our building as a community to influence any decisions. The public hearings are straw men. They give you limited, meaningless opportunity to speak, but they don't listen. They point to open public hearings at the planning commission. The castrated planning commission has zero say on zoning and valiances on any land decisions, unlike every other state in the union. As a commissioner, we listen, but nobody cares what we say. We aren't involved in any decisions. It's all window dressing. In 2017, anything meaningful in the way of land use provisions were removed and given to a hearing examiner.
Mary Lee, I just have a quick question. Is this going to tie into the actual?
Yes.
Okay, just one to me. It sounded, it sounded like it was.
Give me more time then. So tonight, a teeny change buried in the stack of ordinance gibberish on Chapter 2.18 takes away those decisions from the hearing examiner. Now who makes the decisions? A lone arbiter, the head of the community in economic development, a city employee not obligated to listen to the people, a city employee at the will of the city manager. It scorned two years ago, President Lincoln said, "This nation, under God, shall have a new birth of freedom, and that a government of the people, by the people, and for the people shall not perish from the earth." It was a good one. Lincoln never foresaw this. I, for one, do not welcome our dark local government overlords. Our local government might as well be honest and say, "Shut up, slave. Pay your bills. Pay the fees. Pay anything you say, because they aren't giving, you aren't giving us really any say." And now pulling out the hearing commissioner, the hearing examiner. There's no way that I can influence if my neighbors want to build a 30-story building next to me. There's no way. It's taken away from the people, and it's given to one person in the city government. And that's not how it was intended. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Lee. All right, anyone else wish to speak in the public hearing? All right, I don't have any hands online, so I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. And I will read the ordinance and then open up for council discussion. An ordinance of the city of Port Angeles, Washington, amending portions of Chapters 2.18, 16.04, 16.08, 16.09, 16.10, 16.12, 16.14, 17.13, 17.19, 17.31, 17.37, 17.44, 17.45, 17.96, and 18.02 of the Port Angeles Municipal Code. And I just want a quick clarification from staff if the motion needs to include language, adopt the ordinance as amended.
Thank you, mayor. If council does proceed to incorporate the yellow highlighted amendments, then yes, your final motion would, if this passes the amendment, then to adopt the ordinance as amended.
Okay, thank you. All right, council, comments, questions, a motion, any of those things. Lindsay, go ahead.
I just wanted to follow up with that question of if somebody disagrees with the director of Community Economic Development's decision or their designated decision, what is the appeal process or what is the remedy for disagreement?
Shannon's on her way to the microphone. Lindsay?
Good evening. Yes, so the way that this was done, it was recommended by Madrona Law to actually use our tables instead. Nothing's changing for the hearing examiner's approvability of things. They're still type threes. She just recommended instead of listing them twice in our code, that we utilize the table completely. So any appeals, sorry, of staff decision would also be heard by the hearing examiner. I think that was the question. And then any original permits here in the, under Chapter 2, it essentially changes the language to type three permits as specified in Tables 1802050, one and two, and then appeals of type one and type two permits as specified. So the one and two are the administrative decisions.
With the option to appeal to hearings examiner?
With the option to appeal to hearing examiner.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Lindsay, do you have any follow-up? No. Okay.
No, thank you.
Other council members?
I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
Thanks, but I can't read it because I have glasses on. I would like to make a motion to approve the ordinance as amended. Adopt the ordinance as amended.
Second?
All right, any further discussion from council? Latricia, did you have your hand up? No. Okay. Okay, Lindsay, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, this has been a longstanding issue from our development community of just knowing the timeline to be able to build. And if you imagine trying to put a project together and then line up subcontractors, and each of them have a busy schedule, but you need it all to be sequenced. This is going to be hopefully a transformative change, as the number of people have commented in our two hearings on this. So I hope that it's successful. I'd love to see a lot more things become type zero, but at least we have that to aim for as we move forward. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Lindsay. I do appreciate also staff proactively reaching out to at least groups representing people who would be impacted. I know you can't hit everybody, but I think we heard from people at the last public hearing that that was appreciated. And so I think that was useful, and I appreciate that. Any other comments or, go ahead, Calvin?
Thank you. A question for clarification for the record, just the motion that was made does incorporate amendments one and two?
Yes, it was adopt the ordinance as amended.
Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion to adopt the ordinance as amended. Anyone opposed to the motion, please state your opposition. All right, hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And thanks to folks who came to speak and at our last one as well, though I don't think any of them are here today. Okay, we will move on to, well, I guess just let's stay in order, and we'll go to item G1, code re-envisioning, and I'm going to go to Nathan for that.
So mayor and council, this item follows some significant effort by a city council ad hoc subcommittee that focused on the changes to the code relative to boards and commissions. And so there's a number of updates before you this evening. The first reading of this code was considered at the December 3rd meeting. And right now, the code changes and updates the civil service portion of code as well as standards, standardizes procedures for boards and commissions. It standardizes membership for all boards and commissions to the number of seven, as well as standard terms of two four-year terms for each board and commission, with one exception that was alluded to at our last meeting. I'll speak to that in just a second. It also establishes a residency requirement for all boards, with UAC being the one exception relative to one particular representative, and then creates a clear communication channel between council, staff, and boards. So every committee will have an opportunity for a youth advisor as well, and we look forward to that opportunity. And then quorum is a simple majority of filled positions. So all those details are incorporated in the code changes before you. Again, this is located on page G1 of your council packet. And I should note that we do have the ordinance was somehow left out at the, when the packet was released, but it is incorporated in the packet. Unfortunately, you will find it at the very end of the PDF of the council packet on the online version. So it is in the packet. It just is in a different place. But again, this is the second reading, the same ordinance appeared before you at the last meeting, with the exception of these modifications which were discussed at council's last meeting. Those modifications include an adjustment to the lodging tax committee, reducing terms to two-year terms as opposed to four-year terms. Modification of the student position to ensure youth members, one live in the city, as well as clarification that youth members' terms are a minimum of one year renewable up to four years, which was added to 2.25030 of the proposed ordinance. And then finally, that there's a requirement for OPMA, Open Public Meetings Acts, excuse me, Open Public Meeting Act Ethics Training for all board members, as well as Public Records Act Training for all board members incorporated in 2.25055. And council, that is what we have before you tonight. Again, tonight is the second reading, and we're asking for council to adopt the ordinance.
I'll go to Drew really quickly, but Nathan, can you repeat where the incorporation of the training is? I have a question on that.
It is 2.25055, and I will get you a page number in just a second.
I have it.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just wanted to clarify something. You said it all fast because I don't know if something's changed. You stated that a quorum is a simple majority of filled positions. I believe it was a simple majority of positions regardless of filled. Or did we go back to filled positions?
I can double check that with.
Okay, I, the only reason why that stuck out was because I was the one that supported filled positions, and I don't think that was the consensus.
All right, and I will not speak to this item first, but I do want to note that the motion or what I requested, and I can't remember if it was in the motion or not, I thought it was, but is that the training would also include parliamentary procedure? Because I had four items, and there are three here. I don't have that, I don't have it in front of me right now, but I would like to add parliamentary procedure to 2.25.055A.
Do we have an active motion on the floor at this time?
Nope. We don't. So council discussion. Go ahead, Amy.
Thank you. I have a small concern, might be a bigger, bigger word than it needs to be, but I would like to have a discussion or maybe hear a little bit more from the subcommittee on the rationale on, it is G16 in your packets, Chapter 2.25.100 on the rights and duties of permanent committee members that subsection A, I don't know if I'm using all the right words, but, and I apologize if I should have caught this before, but I didn't go down the RCW rabbit trail. And I'm, I guess I would like to hear a little bit more about the change to allow committee members to have the same right of inquiry as council members. My concern there is, I'm going to sound like a jerk either way, but my concern there is that there, we have been elected by thousands of people to present the community's best interests, and members of these committees are appointed by seven individuals. And so I feel like perhaps there should be a little bit more safeguarding in that information, especially with that last sentence there that says that members need to specify whether it's a public records request or not. I feel like somehow that's connected. I would like to hear more about that. I'm on, I, I'm a permanent board member of a county board, and it's, we run, if we have information that we want, we are doing public records requests or we are going, you know, doing that through the staff member there. So I just wanted to have maybe a little bit of parity or talk more about why we wouldn't want some parity there. So if I could hear maybe a little bit more about the purpose, and we could talk about potential consequences to that, I'd appreciate that.
All right, Lindsay, do you have your hand raised to answer that?
Yeah, unless somebody else wants to.
Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, so our, our staff have been treating questions from our committees, not all the time, but often as public records requests. I think that that is problematic in a few ways. One, the public records request process creates a lot of liability for the city that we have to do it right, and there's problems if we don't. Also, the right of inquiry is different than a records request. Records request only is able to request a record. It's not, you know, an answer to a question. So permanent committees may have questions that they want answers to, but there's no record to provide that would answer it. And yet, there's an answer that our staff should provide to that committee. So this subsection is in response to those issues to say that within the scope of those, that permanent committees responsibilities, they can ask questions, and city staff should answer them the same way they would questions from council members who have right of inquiry. It is true that we're elected by, you know, several thousand people in the city of Port Angeles, but then we collectively make very important decisions, such as who's the city manager, made by seven people. So we make those same decisions about the members of our permanent committees, and it does fall on us to make sure that we make wise decisions there. But I don't think that's a reason to hamstring their ability to get the information they need to be able to fulfill their responsibilities on those committees. Thanks.
Thank you. I'll go to Drew.
I just wanted, since I was also on the ad hoc committee, I just wanted to give some of my perspective as well. The benefit of being able to do right of inquiry versus only an informational request is if I just have a quick question for Ben in the planning department, I don't actually have to go and fill out all the paperwork and wait the up to X number of days to get an answer versus him just telling me what the answer is. And if I feel like they're forgetting something, then I can make an actual records request. Also, the provision in here that specifies requests if, what is it? Information are only public records requests if specifically, excuse me, sorry. Public records requests if specifically specified as such. The reason for that is because in all of our training that we have had, everything's a public records request, even if they don't say it. So that way, if a board committee or commission member is asking a question that reasonably can be answered through right of inquiry, it doesn't default to a public record request being triggered unless they want it to be triggered as a public records request. So that's why that specific parts in there. It doesn't remove their ability to request records. It just means that staff does not have to default as they It just means that staff does not have to default, as they do with regular citizens, that any sort of question is interpreted as a public records request. So this is just a mechanism that makes it so they can get answers faster and only pertaining to stuff that they would be under. So the people on the planning commission would not be able to necessarily go ask questions of the police department, as a random example.
Oh, my microphone was on the whole time. Oops. Do you want to follow up on that, since you asked the question? Or you just want to think for a minute?
Yeah, I'm going to process.
Okay. So.
Mayor, I also have the answer on the additional question.
Okay, go ahead.
So on page G14 of your packet, it does indicate that as drafted, a quorum of the permanent committee consists of a simple majority of the filled positions. If staff did not get that right, then I think we should have additional discussion on it.
I believe council wanted it as total positions. And again, I remember that only because I was the one advocating for filled positions.
That's so funny because I don't remember talking about that at all.
Drew, if you like the way it is now, then don't change it.
Yeah, hey, it works for me. If everyone's fine with that, that was my preference. So as a quick reminder, the reason for that specificity is because if council is not able to fill positions fast enough, there literally could be no quorum available if it's a quorum of seated positions, seven people. However, if two people randomly quit a board committee or commission, we're not just not able to have a quorum because one person's sick. So that's why I felt it was important to make sure it was filled positions.
I'm pretty sure you won that argument the first time. All right. So Amy's thinking about her issue. I will just say, I think it's the, the one concern I have with the, or rather, a concern I have with the right of inquiry is that we have a number of board positions. And I understand the value of having a question about something that's on your agenda and being able to call and ask. I feel like that's probably already being done on some level. I could, I mean, staff can tell me if I'm wrong. But that it becomes the potential that everyone's doing it all the time, and now our staff time is all taken up with, not that questions don't need to be answered, but I just want to be mindful of what that potentially means for staff time with the number of people we have on our boards and commissions. And there's only seven of us, so theoretically, we can only generate so many questions. But I think we're pretty good at doing that ourselves. So I just want to, that's the concern I have with that. And I know we talked about it in the subcommittee, but I had concerns about it then. But this is where we landed as a committee, and so I'm just mentioning that because the question was raised tonight. Let me go back to Amy and then back to Lindsay.
Thank you. Some of my processing. I thank you for the clarification, Drew. I'm not sure what you explained is how this is read. So that is a little bit of my concern. And again, concerns is a big word, but I am glad to have this discussion. My other thought is also, let's say, potentially, there's a member of every committee that has this, has a question and is going to our staff with questions, and then we might have questions. And so then we have to wait in line. And sometimes our questions may not necessarily be more important, but more time sensitive. And so I guess I'm just, I'm struggling with the, that's the part where it's the same as. And I also don't know if it needs to be in writing like this because I can't, I don't really see our staff not answering questions that they are asked. I just want to make sure that it is not written in such a way where they have, staff may have to prioritize or put in, you know, have a waitlist of questions. I'm not articulating well, but that's really what I'm thinking about here. And if it's, if what your explanation is that is how it's being read, then I'm okay with that. I'm, it's just not how I read it.
Thank you, Amy. Lindsay?
I'd say from a staff time perspective, following all the little details of public records request compliance probably is more time intensive than simply answering a question. But if there is an issue with staff capacity, it says in that paragraph that permanent committee members or committee support staff should promptly answer permanent committee members' requests for information, or inform the member that staff capacity does not allow for answering the inquiry. So if there's a staff capacity constraint, they can say, I'm sorry, I'm not able to answer that at this time. And that still leaves openly option for somebody to do a public records request, as is their right. But there's not an obligation for staff to exceed their capacity, and that is written right into that paragraph. Thanks.
Thanks, Lindsay. Drew?
I just want to follow up really fast, very much on what Lindsay said. This is not really a change. This is codifying what has been my experience in general, both on the planning commission as well as the Public Safety Advisory Board. Members can just ask staff questions. We can't make requests of staff, but we can ask staff questions. If staff has the opportunity, they answer them for us, because usually they do. And I have not, I have not experienced too many issues with staff not being able to get back to me. This section literally just codifies what for me has been my experience as a board committee commission member. It doesn't actually change anything. It just acts the same way as we've traditionally done it.
All right. Any other questions? Okay. We, if we wanted, oh, I need to read the ordinance. An ordinance of the city of Port Angeles, Washington, repealing and replacing sections of the Port Angeles municipal code relating to the advisory boards, committees, and commissions. Any further discussion or emotion?
I move to approve.
Oh, I didn't second that. Okay. Lindsay, go ahead.
Yeah, I do want to propose one change, and so I'll explain it and then try and amend it. I think we tried for uniformity in all the different committees, while also recognizing that some committees do very different work and have different requirements for who sits on them. Lodging tax is one of those that has a very special role, has a lot of power over discretionary fund for the city, and is required to have tax collectors and tax users on it. So it already has this very narrow restriction. The tax collectors have to have a stake in the city because they own property in the city or manage property in the city that is a business with overnight guests. And then the tax users should also have a stake in the city because they are spending this money on events or other things that benefit the tourism industry in the city. So there's already a requirement built into those two that creates a nexus with the well-being of the city of Port Angeles. So I don't think we actually need the residency requirement for those two items. So I move to amend the ordinance with the following amendment to add at the end of proposed PAMC 2.70.020, subpart A, subpart 2, and subpart 3, quote, "who are not required to be city residents," end quote. And that amendment would basically make the lodging tax advisory committee membership for the tax collector and tax users not required to be city residents.
All right, I don't hear anyone seconding your motion, so I think it fails for, dies for lack of a second. Appreciate your articulating that. So we do have a motion to approve the ordinance, to adopt the ordinance. Any last call for discussion? All right. Hearing none, although, let's just try unanimous consent. Anyone opposed to the motion, please state your opposition. All right, hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And we will take a five-minute break and come back and pick up on where we left off. All right, we need to reconvene as soon as possible. We were missing a council member. Oh, she was up there. Let's make sure Lindsay's back, too.
I was cheap sharp.
All right, perfect. All right. So for those following along, we did move, we have already voted on item G2. We moved that to consent, as well as all of the items in the H section. So we are on item I1, other considerations. And I think that's just me. So as is our contractual obligation to the city manager and the right thing to do, we have recently completed, today in fact, review of city manager West. He is, as people will know, at least people in this room I know, the one employee of the city council. And so we did that work and are, I think, it's fair to say, pleased with the work that Nathan is doing for us and intend to continue his contract with us and hope that he will stay. Don't have any indication that he's not going to, to be clear. So we really appreciate the love of commitment that Nathan brings to the city and how hard he works for our residents. So thank you, Nathan, for that. And we do, I can open it up to council discussion now or make my motion and then, and then open it up for council discussion. There's a preference. One of the things that we also did in our review is consider some changes to Nathan's contract. And I will make the motion and then speak to it, and we'll go from there. So I move to authorize myself, Mayor Dexter, to approve and execute a contract with city manager Nathan West and to make either by amendment or addendum the following changes to the contract. A vehicle allowance increase from $400 to $600 a month. Deferred compensation amount increased from 3% to 6%. Cover the premium for long-term care insurance based on the state mandate. Add an indemnification clause, language to be decided when we sit down to work on the contract. The length of required notice is increased from 30 to 60 days. Add an annual wellness reimbursement of up to $1,000 for gym pool, et cetera. Catch-up compensation of $13,500 in 2025, the same amount in 2026 and in 2027. This compensation does not become part of the base salary. Add a $25,000 catch-up compensation to base salary in 2028. And add language to section 3, subsection 5, and any additional steps or increases to salary as approved by city council.
Move to approve.
How about a second? Second. All right. So. All right. So I will say, and we've had some conversation tonight about spending money, and this is an increase, but one of the things we looked at is local, local comps for people in positions similar to Nathan's, none of whom have the same level of responsibility that he does, and he is significantly lower in salary than any of those people. And so while certainly we're grateful that he is the person in that position right now, we also need to be mindful of the position it would put the city in if we don't significantly increase the salary rate for that position. In, in our current salary rate, I don't think we would be able to recruit anyone. And so to me, this is as much about acknowledging the work that Nathan's done as it is about being fiscally responsible and making sure we're not leaving the city in a position of having to fill the position and backfill significantly the dollar value of the compensation package. So that's my rationale here. And I'm happy to have any discussion or questions from council. Maybe not questions. We've, it, this is what we discussed in executive session as we're allowed to do. So, but if there are any comments from council, I'd be happy to entertain those. All right. Hearing none. We have a motion that I just read. I probably am supposed to reread it, but I, so I will. The motion, the, we have a motion to authorize me, the mayor, to approve and execute a contract with city manager Nathan West and make either by amendment or addendum the following changes to the contract. Vehicle allowance increase from $400 to $600 a month. Deferred compensation amount increase from three to six percent. Cover the premium for long-term care insurance based on the state mandate. Add an, add indemnification clause language. The length of required notices increased from 30 to 60 days. Add an annual wellness reimbursement of up to $1,000. Catch-up compensation of $13,500 in 2025, 2026, and 2027. This compensation does not become part of the base salary. Add, add $25,000 catch-up compensation to base salary in 2028. And add language to section three, subsection five, colon or semicolon, and any additional steps or increases to salary as approved by city council. Anyone opposed to the motion? Please state your opposition. All right. Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you, and thank you, Nathan, for your work. I don't know if you want to say anything. You don't have to, but you can.
Counsel, thank you. No, I would very much like to say something. You know, recognizing this as part of my annual review, I just want to say how much it's appreciated to be able to work in this position for the city of Port Angeles. I think we have an amazing community that there is so much to be excited about opportunity-wise for what can happen here in Port Angeles. And I'm so grateful for the leadership of council as well as the leadership of city staff to get so much done. If you look back at the past year, the number of accomplishments are really amazing as far as each of those items that was implemented, the innovation that was incorporated in those, as well as the new and different projects that we put forward, as well as the amount of dollars we have brought into this community in the form of grants. I'm really excited about all the great things that have been accomplished in the last year and very excited about implementation of the new strategic plan, taking us a step further in a really positive direction.
Thank you. All right. Well, it feels sort of weird to just move on from that, but, but we will. So we'll go to council reports because we also put all of item, all of J in consent, in case anyone is following along. So I will start online. Lindsay?
No report. Thank you.
Thank you. Latricia?
I attended the Clon County MRC meeting last night where we passed our five-year strategic plan at the council meeting. And I don't know if anybody went out to the Three Crabs area over the weekend and saw the King Tides there on the near shore. But again, it's a reminder of our changing climate, sea level rising, and the need to make sure as we're moving and developing policy and encouraging growth, that we make sure that we're addressing climate change impacts from sea level rise, addressing the change in our hydrology here on the Olympic Peninsula. So there's some pretty, John Guzman took some fabulous photos that show both the front and, I mean, there's like four or five houses that are just inundated with water and the houses are just barely sitting outside of the flood, but access to their driveways and properties are completely flooded all the way around. So that's my report. Just kind of want to wish everybody a happy Christmas and New Year because we won't see you until 2025 next. Thank you.
Thank you, Latricia. Brendan?
No substantial report tonight, but I do want to say Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays to everybody. And I went last night driving around with my family and the, I think the lights and everything that everyone's doing is, is on the uptick and both good for our utility and good for the holiday cheer. So thank you. See you in the year.
Thank you, Brendan. Amy?
I have a report. Thank you. Drew?
I'll go super fast since everyone else did. Olympic Peninsula Tourism Commission met Thursday, the 5th, way after our last council meeting. And then between now and then, I've also met with one citizen who had some questions regarding some of our STR stuff, because we talk a lot about STR stuff. So they were able to bring some concerns to me, and I've been able to talk to city staff about those. And for the record, all of my lights are LED, so no, the city's not really getting anything extra from me. Sorry.
All right. I don't have any real report, and I already forgot the thing I thought I would mention. So to everyone's benefit, it's a little faster getting out the door. All right. Nathan? Oh, I know what I was going to say. I could say it somewhere else, but I'll say it here. Just as a reminder, our January meeting is the 7th, which is kind of a weird day. It seems kind of late, but it's because the 1st is Wednesday. And it is a no packet meeting, so there will be an agenda. But if you don't see a packet, it's because we tried to build one that staff doesn't have to work hard over the holiday season to put together a large packet. So we'll have presentations and things like that as we usually do. But just want to remind everyone of that. And I'll go to the city manager report.
So mayor and council, a good transition from that is a little bit more on the January 7th meeting. That will include recognition of visitors from Mutu City, our sister city, as well as some presentations by the Mutu City students. So we're really excited about that. They will be visiting in town January 4th through the 8th. Additionally, I did mention at our last meeting, but a good reminder that we do have the city winter ice village takeover coming this Thursday on the 19th at 5:00 PM, going till 9:00 PM. So we'd love to have you all down there for that. And then finally, just really want to highlight one of the information items for you this evening, and that's the building report. You may recall in 2023, we had a record number of housing units established in 2023 at 66. So far this year in 2024, we're at 92 permits issued for new housing units. So we're really excited about that. And certainly great work to community and economic development for making those happen.
Thank you. All right. That brings us to our second public comment period. There is no sign up, so you can just take a turn. If you are online, please raise your virtual hand. We'll start in council chambers. I don't currently have any hands online. So is anyone here who wishes to speak at the second public comment period? Yep. This is your chance, Jack. Okay. Well, it won't start till you get up there, so. All right. Remember to state your name and whether.
15 Theresia Street, Port Angeles, Washington, 9862. I take it we don't have a city attorney here to, so we're going here to get fish fry to come up into our seven creeks that they killed off salmon on. And we don't want to do the, the traps that I, we designed for to lift them out and, you know, in cooking style where you put the salmon eggs on, you cook them flesh, skin down over and all the fire and flip it over and have a big party here. So I think what we might consider doing is a water work. So we have here a big one spawned by Stevies, a little one down in 10th Street, West 10th Street. We could raise bullfrogs here. We could eat them with a separate heat. We could see them. The manual is reviewed, tents. Like you guys, you put, you put flies in there and the proteins and the maggots are really high and they get really fat and you keep them around just like butterflies down in Louisiana. And we can have butterfly capital. If you haven't, you better try them. That's all I got to say.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, I still don't have any hands online, so we are adjourned. Thank you all very much, and we'll see you in 2025.